Regular thing, right? I'm gonna come in here like 11:15 ish, like every... What day is today? Wednesday. And I also put that in the schedule as well. Good morning, good afternoon, good evening. This is Dr. Garias, Bio 116. This is Wednesday, June 14th, and this is the study session for your quiz one. And it'll cover chapters 14 and 15. Now, if you look at chapters 14 and 15, 14 is gonna give, I believe, is gonna give you a little bit more trouble than 15. So of course, we're gonna go over 14 first. And I'm gonna pretend to be a student, and I'm gonna show you how to defeat this exam and others. So, first things first, you know, I goes, if you haven't watched the study videos, how to deal with a multiple choice examination, and how to study for this test, please hit this up. That's in Unit 1, Week 1 Study Video is the first one. Of course, there's an old video of the box diagram, which it goes over, and that's chapter 15 stuff. Another thing that I'm gonna see that's gonna cause trouble is blood typing, because it's always a high-value topic. And I can tell you right now, the source of the confusion of blood typing is knowing the difference between antigen and antibody. You know, they sound so close that you'll start mixing them up. So we're gonna talk about that. And there's a nice little cardiac anatomy game, if, you know, to get your anatomy for your cardiac stuff for chapter 15. So this is, this is a nice thing in announcements. Now, again, let's, let's begin. I'm a student. I didn't study yet, because why? I have stuff to do. And it is now, what about 10:30, the night before? Quiz is at 8:00 a.m. So I figure, I got about 10 hours. So I'm gonna look at this video. Right?
Okay.
Guess what? I'm just gonna go, I'm not even gonna turn the sound on. One thing you can, one thing you'll notice is, let's make this and watch. Right? When you were watching the, because when you're watching the video, it goes pretty fast, and because it's, of course, an overview. You have to ask yourself, what slides, what slides did your professor go over? And what did they focus on? And of course, what is always the focus on this class is anatomy and physiology. So if there's anything on the slides that has to do with parts, or how the parts work together, that'll be a signal of importance. So right off the bat, the first slide, right? You talk about blood. Did your professor go over this part a lot? No, didn't I, remember I glossed over it? So will that, goes, will this be something important? For, for, remember, chapter 14, chapter 15, the quiz, 20 items. So I'm only gonna pick what? The most important things. But didn't I talk about this several times? Red blood cell, white blood cell, platelet. And yes, I did. So, you know, it's an anatomy and physiology class. So the first thing you're gonna tell yourself is, he's definitely gonna have a question regarding red blood cell, white blood cell, platelet, and can you tell all three of them apart? Now, first of all, is the nomenclature or, or, you know, the wording. So red blood cell, white blood cell, platelet. Could I call red blood cell a erythrocyte? Yup. Could I call white blood cell leukocyte? God bless. Right? Or could I call platelet a thrombocyte? Yup. So that is the first thing that I could do. Right? Because this is medical terminology. You had a decent amount of it. Right? So I could change the names. Now, let's, let's now talk about, and for the new students who haven't had me before, when you're this close to game day, you should be now focusing not on, not on the concepts already. You should've gotten the concepts and the overall idea in class. But now, we're talking memory. Right? So you have to ask yourself, what key words are going to trigger my memory for red blood cell, white blood cell, platelet? So the key word that you heard me talk about on red blood cell is what? Carried. Right? So in your red blood cell box, you're gonna know that red blood cells do what? They carry. And they look like what? Little Cheerios, they look like lifesavers, they look like inner tubes. And what does the inner tube do? It carries. So we have to ask ourselves, what does the red blood cell carry? Oxygen, carbon dioxide. Now, let's stop right there. You can now figure out every single question in the red blood cell. So what does the red blood cell carry? Oxygen, carbon dioxide, nutrients. That could be a question. Because how does it carry it? Right? Remember there was a protein? We talked about that, and we're gonna talk more about that in a moment. So that's in your red blood cell box. You see now that every time you put things in the red blood cell box, those, that should be a red blood cell trigger. So hemoglobin, that's a trigger. Oxygen, carbon dioxide, that's a trigger. Right? By concave disc. Because I talked a little bit about sickle cell. You don't need to know sickle cell, because we're only doing normal. But you need to know that, what does normal look like? Now, the white blood cell. What do they do? Overall function is what? Immune system. So if we're talking, if I ask something that's fighting something, something that's fighting a pathogen or protection, then that's your trigger for white blood cell. And last but, last but not least, what's a thrombus? It's a what? A clot. So when you're thinking about clotting, you're gonna think about platelets, and everything that goes in that platelet box. Right? And what was that? The clotting factors? Extrinsic and extrinsic, intrinsic and extrinsic, vitamin K, right? All of those go in that box. So, when, because when you start pooling your notes together, and that is called chunking. When you start pooling your notes together for categories and keywords, you'll see it starts building questions. So let's, let's build some questions for red blood cell. I go, um, what is the function of the red blood cell? Of course, we'd have the, and this is actually how I would make the choices. The red blood cell would be what? Carrying oxygen, carbon dioxide. White blood cell would be immune function and platelets. Another key word for platelets is hemostasis. Hemo is blood, right? And stasis is what? Blood should stay where? In one place, inside the circulatory system. So how do we do that? Clotting. So if those are my three choices, don't you think I'm gonna have a question where I give you the category, either red blood cell, white blood cell, or platelet? Then I could put the function as an answer. And what are the functions I'm gonna choose from? The ones that fit in the same box and the same category. And the same box, the same category is called what? Formed elements. Now, if you, if you even look at the, the timing of when I did this lecture, look how long I was on this one slide. I was on this slide for what? Over two minutes. So what does that tell you? This slide is crazy important. So let's break down. And we already know the first formed element part, right? Function versus, like what it is. So you can, you can either electronically or physically, some of you print this out. You can write the functions right underneath. So platelet, it'll always be what? Clotting. Red blood cell carries things. White blood cell, immune or protection. Now, you also have to know the difference between the formed elements, the cellular components of blood, and also the plasma. Now, what's in plasma? What's, what's plasma really? The fluid part of blood. And that's why the majority of it is water. Now, I mentioned some electrolytes. I mentioned ways, I mentioned this a little bit. But out of these categories, which is the one that breaks off into what looks like a question? Didn't proteins look good? And then, just like what you did with platelets, red blood cells, white blood cells, what is the function of albumin? So albumin is a plasma protein. So what's the function of albumin? It's water balance. Right? What's the function of your immunoglobulins? It's right there in the word. Immune, right? And what's the function of fibrinogen? Gen to make fibers. And remember in the lecture, I told you, start pairing these up, because these proteins, they support these things. So, nothing supports albumin, but the immunoglobulins? Who also does immune stuff? Globulins and what? White blood cells. So can you put an arrow on that? Because that's gonna be related. Because another thing that you also need to know about studying is, once you put chunking, and once you put things together, the relatable things, therefore, when you start doing your process of elimination, you put all the relatable things together. And the non-relatable things are what? Distractors. Right? So you see these globulins, what are you gonna think? That's in my plasma, but who are they related to? White blood cells. And you're gonna need that, because in chapter 16, we're gonna talk way more about the relationship between globulins and white, and white blood cells.
How do you know they're, I mean, it says globulins, but how do you know they're immunoglobulins?
They're, because I'm telling you. They're immunoglobulins. The majority, the majority of the globulin proteins in your plasma, they're immunoglobulins. And we're gonna talk more about them in chapter 16. They're your IgA, IgG, all those. And last but not least, your fibrinogens. You know, from the word gen, creation of fibers. Who needs fibers to, to work? Remember the sticky gum? Your platelets. So platelets and fibrinogen go together. So you know that the platelets, red blood cell, white blood cell, where is it? Formed elements, right? But what's in plasma? Albumins, globulins, and fibrinogen. So relate those. Yeah, question?
Albumin, what are they doing?
Albumin is for water balance. And this is how I kinda remember it. My, my albumin is in the plasma, which is what? The water part of blood. And it's gonna help control things. So did we got that part down? So this one, really important? This part's really important? Now, didn't we have a whole entire, like four or five slides about your differential? Right? So don't you think we're gonna need to know? Remember, I wrote down the function of platelets, red blood cells, white blood cells here? Right? And then, in your notes, you're gonna write down the functions of albumin, globulins, and fibrinogen? Right? Because these are what? The anatomy. The anatomy of blood, the parts of blood. Well, here's the parts of white blood, blood cells. And nursing, you gotta know your differential. And what does your differential mean? Now, when I said you gotta know your differential, did I not mention other tests? Didn't I mention CBC? Right? You also mentioned, it's also in your slides, hematocrit. So do you think I'm gonna have another? And remember, everything we discussed in anatomy and physiology, even though it's a basic science, we're, we're only discussing the clinical stuff. So another thing we can do is, let's list down every test that I mentioned during the lecture. Right? And it's not on the slide. So because, now, this is the, this is the tricky thing about active listening. Right? You know I'm a clinical guy. I'm internal medicine, I'm a clinical guy. Every story deals with what? Something that happens in the real world. Not theory. Right? So one of the real-world things that we talked about is what? How the anatomy and physiology is going to help you remember tests. Right? Because there's bazillion tests you have to know. So the one test we talked about was the CBC. CBC stands for complete blood count. Now, what are we actually counting in a complete blood count? Aren't we counting the total amount of platelets? Total amount of red blood cells? Total amount of white blood cells? So you're gonna, you're gonna relate CBC with what? Formed elements. And within the CBC, you have something called your hematocrit. And remember the hematocrit was the ratio between what? Formed elements and plasma. So in this particular patient, this patient's hematocrit is what? Forty-five percent. Right? So you're gonna think, what's the hematocrit? It's the percentage or the ratio of the formed elements to plasma. So for this particular patient, it's forty-five, forty-five percent. From that forty-five percent, you can pretty much tell if it's male or female. Who has those, who has more water? Who's softer? Men or women? Right? Not emotionally, jeez. Right? But who's softer regarding muscle mass? Of course, female. Female has more, they're softer, because they have more estrogen, more adipose. So their, their hematocrit's gonna be different. Now, don't have to memorize it, but you gotta use your brain a little bit. Right? So if you know you, what do you call it? If you're more dense, more solid, more muscle mass, that means you should have what? Less fat. And if you have less plasma, this number will go down. What will happen to the formed element number? It'll go up. So think what? Forty-five, goes think forty-five percent, think what? Female. Think around fifty-five percent for formed elements, that's more male. Right? And the more denser, of course, a higher number. But hematocrit, I want you to think, if that's the ratio between my dry and my wet stuff, don't you think that's gonna tell me about the fluid status of my patient? And I mentioned that? Because if that number changes, don't you think this number's gonna change? And that's my, that's the crux of it. So that's your hematocrit. So if the doctor or DNP asks you, hey, what's with the hydration status of my patient? Right? You better report it on hematocrit number. Or you go like, well, she looked good. She had some water. Yeah, those are typical answers I get from nursing staff. She dragged a couple gloves this morning. Did you graduate?
Yes.
Did you pass your end class?
Yes.
Then what kind of stupid-ass answer are you giving me? I have 58 patients, three criticals. I do not have the time, nor the inclination for this stupidity. And that's what you're gonna get. They're gonna say it to you out loud in front of your patient, in front of your staff. So don't be that person. So somebody asks you, hydration status of your patient? You better know the hematocrit. Oh, there's a, oh, I am? If I have to memorize all the numbers, you do. So think hematocrit, fluid status, right? The ratio between formed elements and plasma. What's the other one we talked about? When we talked about the, the thing that carries, right? Didn't we talk about hemoglobin? And isn't hemoglobin, we learned that hem plus globin? So it's a blood protein. And which blood? Your red blood cell. And that's the thing that carries. If my patient isn't carrying enough oxygen, don't you think they're gonna have a problem breathing? Yeah. Right? If they have anemia and they give them a load, that's a problem. And last but not least, we, we talked about hemoglobin, hematocrit. We also talked about differential. Remember, CBC with diff, that's the slang? But the whole word is white blood cell differential. And how do I know my white blood cell differential? See? All the ones, neutrophils, sonocystes, basophils, monocyte, lymphocytes? Isn't that my different percentages of white blood cells? So don't you think I get asked this question? Yeah, question? Oh, by the way, within the CBC, there's a, you can do hematocrit, hemoglobin within a CBC, and maybe you've heard of it, it's called an H and H. Hematocrit and hemoglobin. And isn't that pretty neat? You'll know the fluid status and the carrying capacity, oxygen carrying capacity of my patient with one number. That's what I ask those questions in the war. Don't tell me, she had a drink? Or I think she had some juice this morning? I'm gonna look at you, like if it's a good day, I'm just gonna walk away from you. But if it's a bad day, which is usually 99% of my days in the war, you're gonna get read the ride out. Question?
Are the most precisely differential?
Yeah, white, well, there's other differentials for different things, but the white blood cell differential is the most common. And that's the one where you hear when they say, order a CBC with diff. Right? And be careful, it's slang, because diff also means a stream of the cell reports. There's all the slang all over the place. But you'll know within context. Right? If we're looking for an infection, right? And I wanna know what kind of infection? Which then leads me to the next set of questions. So now, you got a set of questions on this, set a question on this, set a question on this. Now, did you see what you're doing now? That you're now removing the stuff that odds are I won't ask. I'm gonna ask about oxygen and carbon dioxide. Yes, of course you know it's oxygen and carbon dioxide. Right? Nitrogens everywhere, everywhere. Right? For electrolytes, we did electrolytes to death last time. So I'm not gonna ask anymore about electrolytes? No. If you think you're tired of it, this is the fourth time I've thought this course. I'm tired of it. Right? So I'm not gonna talk about that. But this is super clinically relevant. This is super clinically relevant. That's super clinically relevant. Those are must-know topics. So if there are must-know topics, what are the odds it's gonna come out tomorrow? It's gonna come out in some form or the other. Now, let's go to this next topic. Since this thing, this picture led to this topic. And that leads to what? The subsequent slides that are further down. Right? Let's start with, I'm gonna jump a little bit forward, because all of this, we all talked about already. Right? That's a good one. Where's the, where's the blood types? See, that's why, that's why I should write a textbook. Because this is a little bit out of order. So when you get down to these slides right here, because that totally relates to the chart, right? Now, this is a lecture exam, so it's gonna be multiple choice. So there won't be any pictures. But let's look at... So how do you tell neutrophils, sonocystes, and basophiles apart? And let's look at our differential. Our differential can be chopped into two sets. Granulocytes and agranulocytes. The granulocytes are, of course, anything that's a fill. Sonophil, basophil, neutrophil. Right? So that's the first three. And that's also a neat thing about chunking. Instead of looking at the whole thing all at once, you're looking at what? Little chunks, little sections, little bite-sized things. Right? So it goes, if you're, it goes, if you wanna eat all this information, you gotta eat it in what? Palatable amounts. Because isn't it one of the most depressing things about studying? When you see how much work you have to do? Eighty-nine slides, 132 slides? Then you depress the heck out of yourself, and then you don't wanna do the work. But instead, I focus on one half of the slide. One bit of that slide. So let's look at that one differential slide. So what's a differential question could I ask? You have neutrophils, sonocystes, and basophiles. Those are the three types of granulocytes. So I'm not really gonna ask what they look like, but this is a, this, that could be for the laboratory. But don't you think I'm gonna ask a clinical question like, what would happen if my neutrophils were increased? What would happen? That means there's a lot of phagocytosis going on, and they're the first to arrive in infection. So how old is this infection if my neutrophils are left? Neutrophils, also known as your PMNs. Again, nomenclature, know what they're also called. Because could I just call them PMNs? Polymorphous nucleocytes? For sure. But I'll call them PMNs, neutrophils. So you know that this infection is what? Brand-new. This person has an acute infection. It happened right now, because neutrophils are the first to arrive. And what kind of infection? What's the infection that we all know and love? Bacteria, right? It's a rarity that you have a fungal infection. Relative rarity if you have a viral infection. But what do you have all the time? Bacterial infection. So think what? What are our key words for neutrophils? Bacterial infection, first on sight. Right? Neutrophils. Right? Heavy phagocytosis. So what situation could it be? Brand-new acute bacterial infection. Okay? Next one, eosinophils. Remember, we know that eosinophils are bilobular, and bi means two. So they attack two things. What are the two things eosinophils attack?
Intracellular.
Allergies and parasites. So do you think I could have a, I could have a situation? My patient has a relatively severe hay fever. That's exacerbating her COPD. The second you heard hay fever, allergy, what are you gonna think? She's gonna have a lot of, she's gonna have a ton of eosinophils. What was the other situation I thought of, told you about parasitic worms? Kids. Little kids, toddlers. More than 40% of toddlers have worms. Every, like, when I'm on medical mission, I'm gonna do pediatric stuff, right here in Baltimore, every time we do a big worm test, like out of every 10 kids, there's at least four of them have little worms in their butt. Right? So if I did a butt test on that little thing, not the kid, not the worm, right? What am I gonna get? I'm gonna have eosinophils. It goes, I'm gonna have eosinophils. Or eosinophils, phlegm, leukocytosis. Which means what? Lots of eosinophils. And, and remember, that's how I confirm what I have. So eosinophils, what are you gonna think? Allergies, parasitic infection. Eosinophils are bilobular, therefore, they hit up what? Two things. And next one, we're gonna go down, let's go look at basophiles. And you can even see how long I hung out on these four or five slides. It means what? Oh, differential question's gotta come out. Has to come. Now, let's look at basophiles. What was, because what was so great about basophiles? Remember, I mentioned them with another cell. What is another cell that we learned last term that released histamine and heparin? Mast cells. So you're gonna write mast cell right next to basophile. Because now you know that two cells to create heparin and histamine, doesn't it scream both A and B question? Right? And remember, go through your process of elimination. Is it, if it's not part of your both A and B box, please do not write both A and B. And what are the odds it's never? It could be never, but again, go through your process of elimination. If it's not A, if it's not B, if it's not both A and B, then what is the answer? Neither. Do not put neither, just because, man, I can't tell what it is, I give up. Two or three of you still do that. Did it on the last exam, which really ticks me off. Don't do that. Do, remember, think logically. So basophiles, I want you to think what? Histamine, heparin. So that's massive amounts of inflammation. But the big thing is, basophiles and mast cells release histamine and heparin. Now, you think I can break histamine and heparin? Goes, which one will increase inflammation? Histamine. Histamine. Which one will, um, uh, will, uh, get out your blood, or stop blood from clotting? Heparin. Because, any, anything that you have where you have to differentiate two things that sound alike to each other, what does that scream? That's a good, that's a good test question, because isn't histamine heparin? So easy to do this, even though this particular group not, doesn't do that for whatever reason. But histamine and heparin, you guys didn't, uh, remember, histamine, think what? Inflammation. Heparin, you already know what heparin is. It's, uh, anticoagulant. It's, it's against blood clotting. So, isn't that your first box in your differential? Know your granulocytes, neutrophils, eosinophils, basophils. And now you have your keywords. Now, I'm gonna switch gears, and now talk about what? My, um, agranulocytes. Now, the agranulocytes, they have granules, but they're kind of fuzzy looking, not like the granulocytes. Granulocytes really look granular. Granular. Now, what's the only thing we know about monocytes? The big thing about monocytes is what? They become macrophages, and that's a big deal, because who is our macrophage? What do we call our macrophage? Thugs. Got a lot of brains? Nope. But what are they good at? Oh, smash. They're good at, what we do in immune is, um, I'm gonna write out, I'm gonna write down our thugs. They're good at phagocytosis, very good at, that's all they do. But they have to be led there. So if you know you got a thug here, right? Monocytes. That means the lymphocytes have to lead the thugs to go somewhere. So we wrote thugs, phagocytosis, and the number one thug we know is, uh, macrophage. And where do we get macrophages from? Monocytes. When the monocyte rolls around, and then when there's chemo taxes, and someone tells the monocyte to thug out, it'll become what? Changes and then, and kills them. Now, that's monocytes, right? Now, let's talk about lymphocytes. And in lymphocytes, you have two categories, B and T cells, and now with the chart that I wrote, um, uh, so again, you have comparison of something that's in the same category. What does that scream? That's got to be a question, because you have to know the differences between the two, right? So, of course, monocytes, the only thing you're thinking of is what? Macrophage. Now, who are lymphos, lim- lymphocytes? Lymphocytes are of course, B and T cells. So, let's differentiate B and T cells with some key words. So, between B and T cells, which one has the tattletale, which one has the, uh, the helper? T cell, right? And it goes, out of B and T cells, which one is from the thymus? You said that one wrong, I just, right? T cells, of course. And B cells, even though they said versus fabricus of the chicken, it's not from the chicken. Just think B, bone or bone marrow. Right? So where do you get your B cells from? Bone marrow. Where do you get your T cells from? Your thymus, right? That's one differentiation. Now, what do they both do? Which one is your memory cell? B cell. Now, if it's a memory cell, your B cell has to make what? Antibodies. Do your T cells make antibodies? No. Does, and does your T cell have any memory? No. T cells are what? T helper cells are tattletales. Their only function is to do what? Hey, teacher, this one's being bad, and then what do we do? We send the thugs after. Now, to continue our list of thugs, number one, macrophage, right? And in the T cells, which one's the thug? Helper or the cytotoxin? Cytotoxin, CD8 plus cell, because if something's cytotoxic, what's it gonna do? Kill things. I don't know why, I guess they're being politically correct. During my time, we called them T killers, but every textbook I read now, T cytotoxin. But it's a killer. Our killer's smart. No, they're thugs. All they do is what? Kill. So can I add to my thugs? T cytotoxic cell, also known as your CD8 plus cell? And that, isn't that another thing that differentiates your B cell from your T cell? B cells aren't thugs. B cells are what? They're, they're memory, and they're a little bit more finesse, and they're a little bit more complicated. T cell is what? Tattle, thug. T helper, T killer, right? But then, what does the T helper also do? Doesn't the T helper tell the B cell, hey, I don't wanna do this anymore? Please remember what I just did, so I don't have to do it again. Again, back to, T cell is the memory, T cell has two categories, have the tattletale, the key, right? You know now the difference between the two. Now you know your basic keywords for the two, aren't you gonna look for that question?
So it's T cytotoxic and then what the other T?
T helper, which is a CD4 plus, right? And why do I also meant, why, it's complicated why they call them CD4 plus, CD8 plus, uh, it's a biochemistry thing. Just know that, that's what they call them. So when you see on a report, massive decreased CD4 plus cells, that means what? My patient's T helper cells are in the basement, odds are they're either HIV or AIDS, right? So when you see a T helper, uh, cell, whoo? And how many times you got your patients, especially your, um, your intravenous drug addict patient? I don't have AIDS, and then watch your, watch your T cell count in the basement, right? And go, I don't know, I think it's my, I think it's my thyroid, they make up all this stuff all day. Question?
In my notes yesterday, I put TA and TC. Do you, do you remember like why I would have wrote that?
It would be TH.
I think you meant H.
I think it's H because maybe my doctor handwriting spent the H for the A. Mystery solved.
Oh yeah, put H too.
T helper and T cytotoxic. So think, T helper, right? That's the tattletale. You know the tattletale in kindergarten? They're always helping the teacher, helping you get in trouble, right? That's how I run, and that's, that's like the best way to look at it. Uh, this, you know, of course, they're all, um, what do you call that? Um, terms that you need to know, but again, the, these other things will come up before these things. Now let's go back to another picture that was really important, and that was this one. Because I spent time talking about this, and isn't this beautiful because it has what? Negative feedback, it has, uh, you know, exactly how your body works. So, when you have a flowchart like this, it's best to learn it as a story. And the story has a distinct beginning, middle and end. So what's the beginning of red blood cell production story? What's the beginning? You will have what? Low blood oxygen. If you have low blood oxygen content, you have a lot of red blood cells. No. So for whatever reason, you don't have a lot of red blood cells. Now, green means what? Go. So what is it telling the liver and kidney to do? Release what? Erythropoietin. And we know that erythro means blood, poietin means production of. And we know from last term, who makes blood? Bone. Who in bone? Red bone marrow. So, what kind of questions I could ask from just this pathway alone? What is the stimulus for red blood cell production? Or what is the stimulus for the release of erythropoietin, and you'll tell me what? Low blood oxygen, right? Who does it? Liver, kidney, both, of course, both, liver and kidney. And where's the target tissue? Red bone marrow. And lastly, what's a nice question that can, you see how every arrow in this pathway, I have a question? And what's the last arrow? How do we stop it? Well, when the oxygen goes what? Up. When the oxygen goes up, do I need this pathway anymore? No. So that's my negative feedback. So could I ask about, what is the negative feedback signal? Increase in oxygen carrying capacity. It means that what? I have enough red blood cells, stop this madness, right? And that was, wasn't that what negative feedback is? It's the brakes. Negative feedback? And what is the negative feedback? The increased oxygen capacity. And you notice that the brakes, or the end of the story, has to be exactly opposite of the beginning of the story. The beginning of the story is low blood oxygen, so the end of the story has to be what? Increased blood oxygen.
Can you repeat the target question?
The target question is where? Where's the target of, of the erythropoietin? Where's the erythropoietin gonna go? Bone marrow. Question said?
Um, so, the top would be, uh, where it starts, but that would be positive feedback?
No, 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 how this, don't take a positive feedback ever. Because, uh, uh, this group likes to think about positive feedback. I don't know why, it's the exception. What's the rule in the world, right? There's negative feedback, the whole entire world is what? It's motoring, and what do you wanna do? So if you don't hit the little kid crossing the street, you always wanna do what? The brakes. And that's what your body does. Don't, let's not talk about positive feedback until the last chapter, because I know this group
It's all in the last one.
No, no, just, just trust me on this one. Trust me on this one. We had multiple conversations. The difference between negative and positive feedback, and still two or three, yet still chose the wrong one. So we made it a rule in this class, never to talk about positive feedback for oxytocin until the last chapter. Some of you here are anchoring, and, uh, for both of you who are new, anchoring is a medical term where you ever have a doctor, like, oh, you definitely have bronchitis. Yeah, but I don't have bronchitis. No, you got it. You ever have a, a clinician do that to you? That's called anchoring. They're so stuck on this one concept that they can't let go of it. Or, you're like, uh, I would say, it goes, oh, your patient definitely has, uh, depression. No, probably has low testosterone. I saw in the lab, it's low testosterone. When you increase the testosterone, he'll stop being depressed. No, he's depressed. We gotta give him antidepressants. Now, of course, that's your classic psychiatry. If your patient even remotely looks sad, what are they gonna give you? Lexapro, right? But we don't do that. The only good stuff is the evidence. So be that nurse's stuff, uh, silly doctor, don't give silly stuff. So we got this done, and now, if you see me focus on any pathway, you know it has to have a distinct beginning, middle and end, right? And know that I will always ask about, you know what? What started it? What is the thing that kept it going, and how do you stop it? If you over the pathway. Question?
The target is the red bone marrow.
Yep. So if I say, if I say target, where's the, where's the erythropoietin have to go? Red bone marrow.
But then it's the liver and kidney.
Liver and kidney is what? Is the thing that secretes the erythropoietin. So do you think I could ask the question, which of the following organs secrete erythropoietin? Is it liver, kidney, liver and kidney, or neither? And you'll tell me what? Both liver and kidney. Now, can I mess you up and say liver and spleen like I did to you at last round? And you guys are, liver, liver and something else, and then do it both? Remember, read the question. Because if you don't, because if you don't think your ATI and friends are gonna do that to you, they're gonna do that to you. That's why I gave the video about how to defeat a multiple choice exam. Learn that now, get used to it now, so that come game time, you don't get into that. Now, what's the last thing that, uh, all the rest of this is, you know, yeah, I could ask it, but we wanna get into uh, the really, really important thing, which is this slide right here. This slide right here goes, goes, was gonna trip up everybody. So let's break this down, now that we already had the lecture, we had a, we had a, a day to soak it in. So what could I, when you see a chart like this, what could I ask you? I could either ask you, I could either give it, give in the antigen and the antibody. Don't you think I could ask you, what's the blood type? Sure. And, could I give you the blood type, and you tell me what kind of antigen, or what kind of antibody it is? So you see there's two sides. So let's go over those two side of the question for each category. So, could I do this? My patient had blood type A. What antigen does my patient have? A. What antibody does my patient have? B. And remember, antibody is anti-something. So if you're anti-something, that means you're gonna fight with something. So, person who has type A blood, what jacket do they have? What coating or, uh, do they have on their red blood cell to say that they're in the A gang? They have what? Antigen A, because antigen, gen, creation of, what starts the trouble? Remember in the Bad Gang movie, what starts the trouble? Good, take that check off, so, no, I'm a blood, I'm a cripple, whatever, right? And then you're gonna have what? You know, I didn't really, like, because I'm from the East Coast, I don't, I don't know anything on color, or any of that stuff, right? Uh, I went to Daly City in San Francisco, mistake, right? I got into some business, because what? Didn't understand antigen starts the trouble. And I had my brand-new New York Yankees, um, baseball cap fitted, I looked good, problem was, uh, the hole. And I'm not, now I'm gonna play some daily, right back home. And I, and I, and of course, I'm from Daly City, so I would pick up that hat, no, F you, and then I started thinking, wait a minute, I'm unarmed, and I'm alone. Okay, here you go, here, here, sir, here's my hat, have a nice day. My sister was like having a commission fit, she was like, she looked at me in the car, didn't say anything, she go, you find out. I'm like, you know, don't you think a sister would tell you, who's lived in San Francisco for ten years, that don't wear that hat? No, my sister wanted to see the madness. So, think what? That hat, the jacket is the troublemaker. It starts the trouble. So that's the antigen. And, anti means what? It's gonna be a fight. Now, if I said, my patient has type B.
Hmm? It's always been a metric blood type.
Yeah, so, anyone who's A will always have a what antigen on them? A. And what will also be in their blood? Anti-B. So, can you give an A person B blood? Nope, because they'll fight. And vice versa. Now, if I ask, if I tell you, given my patient has, uh, type B blood, what kind of antigen, what kind of jacket, because they're in the B gang, what kind of jacket they're gonna have? B jacket. And who do they hate? So you gotta think about it like in those terms. Now, AB, if you have AB, you have what? Both jackets, A and B. Now, if you spent all your money on jackets, do you have any friends to go beat up anybody? Nope. So, AB has no antibodies. Right? Right here. So, AB is the universal what? Recipient, because they're welcome, I want them both jackets, I want both jackets, come on in. Now, who's the exact opposite? Type O, which is the universal donor. So, universal donor, they don't have any antigens, right? So, I can give it to anybody, because they won't start any trouble. And, but if I don't have any antigens, I gotta have what? Those, uh, both antibodies. So if you look at it that way, that's one side of the question. Now, I could cover this part, can I give you this question? Which of the following ABO blood groups don't have any antibodies? And you'll tell me what? Like what? AB. Um, uh, uh, my patient was found to have, um, antigen B on their blood. What is their blood type? B. My patient was found to have anti-B in their blood. What kind of blood type do they have? A. Who's the universal donor? Who's the universal recipient? That's all the ways I could ask this slide. So, if anyone gets it wrong, call it a day, just go home, stay there. No, you'll be fine. If you got it wrong, guess what? We're gonna see it two more times, right? If you don't get it wrong, if you still get it wrong by the third time, okay, we're gonna have a talk. But, but other than that, now you see what antigen is and what antibody is. And now you know why you have to have an antibody tighter, when you got, even though you may have a booster, and you may have a vaccine. Because the facility wants to know, do you have fighters that will fight the thing that we have, right? And that's what antibodies are. So we're all good with that? Everyone's gonna get that down? Eh, agglutination, nice to know, hemolytic disease in the new boring, eh, we're none of them obstetrics, I really wouldn't care less, because we just what? Now, uh, we have anti-A, anti-B for the ABO system. What's, what's? What's the RH system? It's what? D. So, now, we're not gonna do it yet, but definitely for lab, we're gonna show you blood piping. So this will set you up for blood piping. But for right now, these are the things that are in chapter fourteen, these are the things to focus on, right? We're all good with fourteen? Let's go slip right into fifteen. So you look at fifteen, oh, look how fast my lecture is, sixteen minutes. That means what? I'm breezing through it. So, right off the bat, doesn't this look familiar? Didn't it look like the second slide of the previous lecture? And this, the, 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 the blood vessel part of a yada yada, but what did I focus on? And didn't we even make a chart in class, arteries versus veins versus capillaries? So then it becomes a category question, or what I like to call it, um, I like calling it pseudo-matching, right? Just like with your red blood cell, white blood cell, and platelet question, doesn't, now that you know how teachers make exams, doesn't it seem almost stupid now, right? But before, the problem was, did you, did any professor ever tell you how they made an exam? No. And actually, I'll be honest with you, there are some professors out there, not in this place, but in other places, go get it right off the internet, and then just copy and paste, and good luck. But we don't do that here. All of the tests here created are exams, and they have to be created and approved, and based on the curriculum, right? So here, this is my, this is my curriculum, so I mentioned this, but what did I focus on? This. So, definitely, do you know the difference between an artery, vein and a capillary? So again, let's, let's cut to the chase, um, and, uh, let's give you some sample questions. Which of the following, artery, vein or capillary, which of the following is typically oxygenated? Arteries, which is typically deoxygenated? Veins. Now, could I switch, can I switch up and say sort of oxygenated, deoxygenated? Could I ask, the red blood cells, will they carry oxygen or carbon dioxide? If it's oxygenated, the majority of the red blood cell will carry what? Oxygen. If it's deoxygenated, the majority of the red blood cell will carry what? Carbon dioxide. Now, out of arteries, veins and capillaries, which one has the thickest wall? Arteries. Arteries, veins and capillaries, which one has the thinnest wall? Capillaries. Arteries, veins and capillaries, which one is good for gas exchange? Capillaries, because it has the thinnest wall. Arteries, veins and capillaries, which one is the deeper structure under high pressure? Of course it's what? Arteries, because remember, if the artery has to be thicker, tougher, that means it's under high pressure. And remember, because, um, if it's under high pressure, it's gotta be where? Remember we talked about, when you feel your pulses, you don't feel them up top, you feel them where? Deep, right? So when you're looking for pulses when you're in med surg, please don't do this. You don't touch your, touch your patient's wrist, you find the navicular and you do what? You press. Arteries, veins and capillaries, which one has valves? Veins. Vein, valve. Why do we have valves? Is the veins under high pressure or low pressure? Low pressure. So do you see what I did there? If you can fill out a little chart of comparison between arteries, veins and capillaries, you have that question down.
Arteries on high pressure?
Yes. And that's why, if I cut your artery, And that's why if I cut your artery, what will happen? They'll start squirting out. But if I cut your vein, it will ooze out. Right? Do you see when, um, when they take your blood, when they take the needle out? See the blood just like hmm, something like that? But if you've ever, well, let's not talk about the other situation. If you've ever popped an artery, you're, you're gonna see it's a little mini town. And it's gonna be scary. But let's not be in that situation. That's not a good situation. Uh, the, 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 pulmonary versus systemic circuit. Did I not make a big deal about left versus right? So let's go to a picture of left versus right. This side, is this left or right? Left. Because remember, always act the perspective of your patient. So the left side, is that the systemic or the pulmonary side? So if my patient is having left-sided, uh, left-sided heart failure, where is the problem? Is the problem in the lungs or problem in the system? System. If my patient is having right-side, right-sided heart failure, is that the problem in the lungs or problem in the system? Problem in the lungs. So if my patient is having a right-sided heart failure, this side, then what should you, we all be investigating? Someone better be doing a chest X-ray. I'm just saying. But I'm telling you, it's amazing how DNP's and MD's forget their basic sciences when they're under pressure. Next, this, nice to know, location of the heart, yada, yada, yada. Right? Those of you who have been before know that what? Anatomy is all about layers. Those of you who are new, every time you see layers in anatomy physiology, you know it's gonna come out. I'm always gonna ask, what's on top? What's on the bottom? What's in the middle? And what's on the top always has to be the tough thing. So your fibrous pericardium is the most outer layer, so that's gotta be the what? Toughest. And we're gonna, we're gonna have another set of layers that are underneath this. But although, uh, another thing that I always ask is, uh, which one is first visceral or parietal? And the way to remember visceral is visceral is your guts. You know, when you're having a visceral experience, you ever feel so bad that you wanna vomit? Like someone made you feel bad or you got so angry that you wanna vomit? Right? That's where visceral, that's your guts, that's on the inside. So between the visceral and parietal pericardium, what's the deeper one? This one. Now, this is part of your serous pericardium, which means what? In between, there has to be serous fluid. And the function of that fluid is what? Lubrication. Because, you know, just even rubbing your hands together, it forms heat, it'll start wearing away and stuff. You can't have that happen. And that layer in between the parietal pericardium and the visceral pericardium is known as the serous cavity, also known as your pericardial cavity. Right? So right off the bat, knowing this, knowing your layers of the heart, really important because it's a classic anatomy question. So some, um, layers are definitely gonna come out. Yep.
So both the para, well, I don't know the name for the bottom, the perion and the pericardio are both part of the serous?
Yeah, they're both part of your serous pericardium, right? And the parietal one is on the outside. Visceral is on the inside. And then you have what? You have fluid in the middle. Now, so you see going forward, any layers question, you don't even have to ask me, it's on, it's gonna be on that. Now, what's another layers question? Epicardium, myocardium, endocardium. Now, uh, the one thing that I failed to mention that, the epicardium and the visceral pericardium, right? We saw the visceral pericardium was like the bottom of that last list. Well, the visceral pericardium, the epicardium, depends on what textbook. The textbook that I learned it from say there's two thin layers. But this textbook says there's what? They're together. Now, am I gonna ask like which one's which? No. But I'll ask between epicardium, myocardium, and endocardium, which one's the deepest?
Endo.
Endo. Right? Right? From this layer, this set of layers, not the, not the pericardium, which is the covering layer. Now, which is the thickest? Myo. Right? Now, remember, endo, if it's on the inside, that means it's all the delicate structures. Remember all the valves that we all talked about, the skeletal system, the heart and that, and all that stuff? That's the endocardium. So if you've got a valvular problem, or if you have, you have a heart attack to the level of your endocardium, how much trouble do you have? You're in a ton of trouble. So endo, I want you to think the innermost layer. And pericardium is the what? Peri means surrounding, it's the top layer. Next, what looks good on this? Now, all of this, uh, we're gonna skip this because, uh, all of this can be asked in a different way. But I'm gonna show you how I could ask this anatomy without showing you a picture. But eventually, you're gonna need to know these pictures for laboratory, you're gonna need to know it for your midterm. So that's in what? Uh, two and a half weeks. So we're gonna skip through this and we're gonna go through, let me go through the picture of, uh, of the, what do you call that? The, the box diagram. And if you remember the picture, this is the picture. So if you're able to draw this in your mind, wonderful. And do you see what we did? This is the red part. This is the blue part. This is the systemic, oxygenated, and this is the pulmonic or pulmonary circulation, which is your right side heart, right side of the heart. So what kind of question could I ask? The first kind of question I can definitely ask is a DOB question. You have four valves. Alright? So let's talk about the first two. And that's your AV valves. So that's your bicuspid and your tricuspid. Now, where's your bicuspid? It's on the what? Left side. Tricuspid on the right. And remember, bi means what? Two. It also means, bicuspid has two names. What's the other name for bicuspid? Mitral valve. So bicuspid, AKA mitral valve, is on the left side, in between the left atrium, left ventricle. Tricuspid is between the right atrium, right ventricle. Right? Now, what are the other two valves? It is your aortic semilunar valve and your pulmonic semilunar valve. So where are those things? They exit the ventricles. So of course, aortic semilunar valve exits what? Left ventricle. The pulmonic semilunar valve exits right ventricle. So do you think I could ask those questions on where exactly? And how, this is how I could ask it. Uh, which of the following, bicuspid, tricuspid, pulmonary, semilunar valve, aortic semilunar valve, which of the following is located on, um, is located in between your right atrium and right ventricle? And you'll tell me what?
Oh, no.
Right? I'd ask, it goes, um, which valve goes, is at, uh, is, um, exiting your left ventricle? And you'll tell me what? Aortic semilunar valve. Which valve is exiting your right ventricle? Pulmonic semilunar. And if you can draw this, you know, it's right ventricle, it's heading where? Towards lung. Left ventricle is what? It's heading towards the quest of bodies. So this has to be the aorta, that has to be the pulmonary artery. Now, another classic question, since I mentioned the colors, can I ask, is it oxygenated or deoxygenated? So let's go through those kind of questions. The blood in my left atrium, is it oxygenated or deoxygenated? Oxygenated. The blood in my pulmonary vein, is it oxygenated or deoxygenated? The blood in my pulmonary artery, is it oxygenated or deoxygenated? Deoxygenated. Now, you see the pulmonary artery is the exception to the rule? Right? There's several other exceptions, especially in the fetal circulation. But for us, that's the exception to the rule. Superior vena cava, does, is it oxygenated or deoxygenated what? Deoxygenated. The superior vena cava.
Pulmonary valve and the pulmonary?
Pulmonary vein is what? It's colored red.
Yeah.
So it's oxygenated. Vains are typically colored what? Blue.
Right.
But this is the exception.
The vein and then the pulmonary artery.
That's the exception. Because the pulmonary circuit is what? Backwards. Because you're not going to the rest of the world, you're going through the lung, which picks up oxygen, not giving it all. Uh, what's another question I could ask? None. That's exactly how I'd ask it. So I could ask you a valve question, I could ask you an oxygenation versus deoxygenation question. So if you know how to draw this, world's your oyster. You can, there's a million and two questions I could ask. I could also ask, um, uh, um, where is the blood coming from in the pulmonary, uh, pulmonary vein? And you could tell me what? Lungs. Where's the blood going to from my pulmonary vein? And you'll tell me what? I think it's here. Goes, uh, what is my pulmonary artery attached to? And they'll tell me, right ventricle. Where's the, where's the blood in the pulmonary artery going to? It's going to my lung. So if you know the, uh, if you can draw this, you can answer all these questions. You don't have to think. It's just right there. You close your eyes and there it is. And that's why when Dr. Piggy taught us this, it was brilliant. Because what have all of us in the room been doing all of our lives? We were looking at that horrible picture of the art and just memorizing stuff. It's like, this goes there, this goes up, this. I just knew that, that, uh, you know, you go left ventricle, aortic semilunar valve, the aorta, the system. I just memorized it that way. Why do I have to memorize it? Now I just what? Close my eyes and it's there. You know that, um, you'll see that some of you already did that, um, the cardiac cycle, where you had to cut and paste with little boxes? That's how most people learn the cardiac cycle. Don't you think this is a more brilliant way to learn the cardiac cycle? It's easier. And it's visual. So it's like there's one big cheat sheet. But of course, don't walk around with this tomorrow and, you know. Again, if you fail, it'll be me. But I'm telling you, get a blue pen, get a red pen, try it like two or three times. Try it again two or three times tomorrow morning before, before the exam. You'll pick up three or four questions easy peasy. No.
What?
Because it has to be in your head.
What?
No scratch paper.
Why?
Because it's gotta be in your head.
They will.
Yeah, well, you just wanna close your eyes, throw it in your head. Trust me, uh, they actually, years ago, the, the, um, taking NCAP, you're allowed one piece of paper. That rule changed about 15 years ago. No pieces of paper, no calculators, nothing. You don't draw anything on the side, you don't do any. It's just you and that now, and the rest. And I believe they, I have to ask, but I believe they do the same thing for nurses, for, for your NCAPs.
No, you, you guys.
God damn it, why? It's good for NCAP people, it should be good for you guys. Not. But hey, uh, uh, um, actually, my daughter said it was cumbersome. Because, uh, when she took her, um, when she took her, um, NCAPs five years ago, she said having this crap made her start thinking of things other than the question and started leading her to other places. So she didn't, um, uh, she didn't really use it. Uh, even though in practice she used it. She said at, in actual game time. Me, when I took my NCAP, my goodness, if I didn't have that scrap piece of paper, I would've been dead in the water. But A is what it is. We train how we, we train how we play. That's how we, that's how we're gonna do it. Alright? Anyone have any questions on how this is gonna go? Yep.
Um, in the bottom and the middle, that, yeah, what, what is that?
Pulmonary artery. And this is the pulmonary vein. Yeah, I'm gonna go, I used to have this little drawing pad so that my, um, my handwriting was a little better, but I think, uh, no, I know, Professor stole it. Like this thing lungs, it looks like movings or lives. No, it's lungs. L U N G S. All the other ones turn out okay. So this is, this is golden. And I've only been teaching it this way for like 10 years. Uh, all the other years, I was just like, good luck, guys. Uh, watch the video on, on the order and have fun. Don't cry when you fail. And again, will this be on? No. So let's look at some other stuff that could be on. When I'm looking at this, do I see another comparison, systole and diastole? Right? And can, can it ever be both? No, it has to be one or the other, so don't. So I could ask, and what was the big thing with systole and diastole? Wasn't blood pressure? So my patient has a blood pressure of 200 over 110. Right? Goes, what is their systole? 200. The 110 is what? Diastole. Okay? And, uh, might as well teach you this anyway. Your pulse pressure is minus the big number, minus the little number, that's your pulse pressure. Your pulse pressure should be anywhere 30 to 40 millimeters mercury in between. If not, that means the pressure between the contraction of your heart and, uh, and it's more feeling, not really a relaxation, it's the feeling on the heart. So systole, diastole. And the cardiac cycle is what we already just went through. Uh, what's another side? This, nice to know, we already know what a sin sishum is. Um, intercalated this, and nice to know. Ooh, must know. Conduction system of the heart is a must-know thing. First of all, we know where's the source of all the signals coming into this is of course the modulla ablongata. Right? Now, the modulla ablongata sends messages to the SA node. The SA node is the pacemaker. AV node is the brakes. It's gotta slow it down so that you can have some diastole and have some heart filling. Then you have the bundle of hiss, also known as your AV bundle, left and right bundle branches, and your prkinji fibers that stretch into your ventricular walls. So what could I ask you? What's the pacemaker? SA node. Where are the brakes? AV node. And goes, uh, where's the bundle of hiss located? Well, it's located here in your interventricular septum, along with your left and right bundle branches. And where are the prkinji fibers located? On the outer walls of your ventricul. And it has to go in that order. Can I ask an order question? Sure. Electricity has to go from SA, AV node, bundle of hiss, left and right bundle branch, and then prkinji, in that order. If it doesn't go in that order, you have fibrillation or you have a dysrhythmia, which is not a good thing. Where's the, um, yeah, top to bottom? Well, goes, what's the pacemaker? SA node. What are the brakes? As in, you know, brakes, our AV node. Where's the location of your AV bundle, also known as your bundle of hiss? It is in your interventricular septum. Right? Remember, septum is the thing that separates left and right? And where's your left and right bundle branches? It also in your interventricular septum. But where are your prkinji fibers? They're all on the outside walls of both of your ventricles. Right? And if you, goes, and if you, uh, you don't know what that is yet, rewind, watch this video and look at where my mouse is. AV bundle is called the bundle of hiss. That's capital H I S. Or you can try to memorize this madness, which is stupid, don't do that. Or you can try to memorize this madness, which is stupid, don't do that.
What is the medulla oblongata exactly do then?
The medulla oblongata, if you remember from last term, remember, something has to control the coordination between heart and lungs.
So it controls the coordination?
The medulla oblongata, for our case, for the, for the conduction system of the heart, controls it.
I'm confused about that.
Which one?
AV node and the bundle of hiss are the same thing?
The bundle of hiss and AV bundle branch are the same thing. But I'll always call it the bundle of hiss, because in every textbook.
It's in a different order.
If it doesn't go in that order, of course, you have abnormality, which won't be on a quiz. But you'll see it when you do EKG stuff, it's called a dysrhythmia.
And then right after that, it's the, uh, prkinji fiber?
Yeah, prkinji fiber is always last. It does, yeah, it goes like, whoop, it's like a two Js.
Where's the bundle of hiss located?
Interventricular septum. So inter means what? In between? In between your ventricles and what separates left and right? Septum. Alright. Now, if, I'm gonna ask you about the electricity, about the wires, I'm gonna have to ask about the electricity. So I'm gonna have to ask this one. P wave, QRS complex, and T wave. And P wave coordinates with what? Atrial depolarization. Meaning the P wave is gonna signal the atrium to do work. And what does, what is the only work that the muscle does? Squeeze. What's the QRS complex do? It's not one wave, it's three waves. Q wave, R wave, S wave. Altogether, QRS complex. And what does that do? Ventricular depolarization, that means QRS is gonna now signal what? Your ventricles to pump. And last but not least, your T wave. That is ventricular repolarization. So that's rest and recharge, right? So, is your heart pumping during the T wave? It is not. It is just getting ready for what? The next cycle. Now, is there any atrial repolarization? No. There's only atrial depolarization, ventricular depolarization, and ventricular repolarization. So it's just those three things, that's it.
Repolarization, it does exist, but it's hidden?
Yeah, the, um, atrial repolarization is hidden, so it doesn't really exist, it's, it's hidden in this QRS. So it's usually not a question, or you don't really look at it. Because you can't look at it, it's hidden.
You ought to ask for something.
Nah, not today. Maybe tomorrow. Now, remember your heart sounds, love, dub. S1, S2. Remember what makes, what makes your heart sound are your valves closing. So what's the first set of valves that we talked about? AV valves. So, S1 matches 2 when your AV valves close. S2 matches when your semi-lunar valves close. Makes sense, right? It does, love, that's the first thing that happened, dub, that's the second thing that happened. S1, S2, and that's the worst I've ever done. Uh, chord and tendon, eh, no, no, medulla oblongata, we're ready to talk about. Artery versus vein versus capillary, we're ready to talk about. Eh, diffusion filtration osmosis, nice to know, we were ready to talk about that. Ad nauseam, uh, the first anatomy physiology one, so I don't like it. Don't worry about your pulses, that's a clinical thing. Blood volume, nah, ooh, viscosity. Viscosity talks about how thick your blood is. And that's important. Because if you have thick blood, like in a diabetic, or a patient who's hypertensive, or a patient who has hypernatremia, it's got a lot of salt in their blood, what's gonna happen? They have greater resistance to flow. If you don't flow very well, will oxygen get to need where it goes? So, greater resistance to flow, greater the force, greater the blood pressure. So, for example, my patient has increased viscosity because they're an uncontrolled diabetic. Would their blood pressure increase, decrease, or stay the same? Increased. I gave my patient heparin, which decreases the viscosity of their blood, what's gonna happen to their blood pressure? Increase, decrease, or stay the same? Decreased. Worst I could do on a viscosity question. Because that's kind of important, because isn't that what we're doing with meds? Because, um, uh, and isn't that what diabetes does to your blood? Yep. So, now you know. And, eh, nice to know, basal constriction, basal dilatation, we already talked about that a lot last term. Oh. This is important, because you're gonna see this again in chapter sixteen when we talk about lymphatic tissue. Now, we already know that the venous blood or veins have valves because it's got low pressure. And if it's low pressure, it begs the question, then how does the blood with such low pressure get back to my heart? Well, three things. A, skeletal muscle contraction, that means my patient gotta move around. B, my patient has to be breathing. Respiratory movements. And of course, there is some basal constriction of veins inside. Because who has a ton of muscle? Is it artery or vein? Artery, because the artery is what? High pressure. So I could ask, you know, uh, this is a nice si- side question, but this is really neat, because you're gonna see this again when we talk about, um, lymphatic tissue. Uh, central venous pressure, CVP, eh, and the rest you don't need to know. So that concludes chapter fourteen, chapter fifteen. And when you look at it, there's more than enough ten items and ten items. Alright? But now, instead of having to look at sixty slides, now what are you looking at? Looking at more than what? Fifteen slides, twenty slides. Right? That's how a student should study. Should be focused based on what? The goals of the class and the goals of the lesson, uh, uh, of the lesson plan. And if you hit those, and then figure out every which way that the professor could ask it, then you are more than prepared. And if those of you who have expressed that I have test anxiety, that's the number one way to deal with test anxiety is to prepare. To actually, but not over-prepared. Don't be like some of the nurse candidates in the hallway, they're almost crying right before the exam. Right?